Okay, I'm actually showing at 6:32, so I'm gonna apologize for starting late. And it's gonna take me just a minute to get where I need to be on my computer. So I'm probably just gonna talk for just a minute. We're probably live now, I would hope. But had some fairly...
No, no, I'll be fine.
It'll just, I can usually, I know you all find this hard to believe, but I can usually ramble enough to make up for what I'm doing. I would imagine we probably are, at least I hope we are. This week, in Washington DC, it was announced that Mayor Potem Tracy Snyder was selected to be the State Chair for the state of Colorado for one of the parties, and you probably all know which one it is, but we're nonpartisan up here, but their municipal officials. And the DNC, oh, I just gave it away, didn't I? "It's a major voice in local politics and works to promote the national goals and programs, and highlights leaders and policy work that contributes to a stronger America." Mayor Potem Snyder, who I already knew this, is considered to be one of the rising stars. And I'd like to congratulate her on her selection as the State Chair. And that D could've stood for anything, because we're nonpartisan here. So, but anyway, why don't we get started? City Council meeting for March 21st, 2011 will now come to order. Please remember times indicated next to the agenda items are approximate start times only. And please turn off all your cellphones for the duration of the meeting. And will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Natale?
Here.
Mayor Potem Snyder?
Here.
Councilman Moreno?
Here.
Councilman Benson?
Oh, and please push your button.
Because that's new, we haven't been doing that for seven years.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
Present.
Councilwoman Teeter?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Mackel Downey?
Here.
And Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will the audience please rise for a moment of silence, and then join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At the present, would, oh, there you are, John. Would you please pass around the microphone for introductions?
My name is Claudia Bierbaum.
My name is Mandy Krummel.
My name is Stefan Heinisch.
And my name is Britta Walter.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Danny Thomas?
Betty Thomas.
Pam Sfrattler.
Ellen Haug.
Gia Rimaserna.
Derek Muntana.
Tova Forgo.
Joy Bishop.
Jean Lefell.
Greg Clemens, Public Works.
Deborah Bullock, Commerce City Historical Society.
Reba Droder, Commerce City Historical Society.
Roger Tenenberg, Finance.
Patrick Buckley, Building Official.
Michelle Halsted, Director of Communications.
Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Development.
Preston Gibson, Excel Energy.
Thank you very much, thank you all for coming, and thank you to our audience. I'm so used to looking over here at the camera saying welcome, and now the cameras are everywhere. So, they're everywhere, which is something that this council had pushed for for a long time, so it was actually a good thing. The next item is, we have four visitors, as if the people would've probably realized from the slight accents, that we have four visitors from Germany, and they're actually here on the McCloy Fellowship. And I just have a short little history. This is actually the American Council on Germany, was incorporated in 1952 in New York, as a private nonprofit organization to promote reconciliation understanding between Germans and Americans, the aftermath of the war. Among its founders was John McCloy, hence the name, who was the first civilian US High Commissioner in Germany during, following the war, and was the founding chairman, and continued to serve till 1987. Over the past 30 years, more than 700 American and German journalists, scholars, and other mid-level professionals in a variety of fields have been given the opportunity to travel overseas and broaden their personal and professional horizons under the auspices of the American Council on Germany's fellowship programs. Today, roughly 40 Americans and Germans travel each year through four distinct fellowships, gaining a better understanding of how issues are approached on the other side of the Atlantic, and forging lasting connections with their transatlantic counterparts and fellowship alumni alike. We actually, one of the parts is mid-level professionals in the field of agriculture, art, environmental policy, and urban affairs. And they're unable to draw upon the local expertise of the transatlantic counterparts and call best practices overseas through this fellowship program. Because of Commerce City's involvement in a lot of international items, and through the National League of Cities, we were extremely honored to be able to have our city manager Jerry Flannery apply and be picked for this fellowship, and he was in Germany, was it during this past year or the year before? During this past year. And now we have four members who have also won the right to take this fellowship, and they've been to New York, and now here. And then you're headed to Laramie, Wyoming. It's gonna show them a whole bunch of what the USA is, coming from the big city to us, you know, kind of a medium city, and then to Laramie, which is our biggest city on the other side in Wyoming. Mr. Flannery, if I could turn this over to you, that you could do some introductions, and I think they have a short presentation maybe?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, it is a privilege to be able to be on the receiving end of an exchange program such as this. When I went to Germany with two other officials from the US, we actually visited the communities that the prior fellowship members had, and they came to the US. So now, when next fall comes along, the members from the US will actually go to these individuals' cities. And they've had a full couple of weeks already in the US. As you mentioned, one of the stops will be Laramie from here, and that individual up there was a partner, traveling partner with me. And they've got a full schedule while they're in Commerce City and Denver, and they had a great day today, I believe. And we wrapped up a two-hour leadership team meeting prior to coming to council, and the leadership team for the city explained each of the roles of each department in our city's structure and how it ran. And we felt that to complete the picture, we would invite them tonight to see the council in action and how you sit. It's interesting, for comparison, I believe it's Stendal, has a population of 44,000. We just had our census response, and we came back at 45,900. Their city council numbers 40 council members. So, it's an interesting structure, it's an interesting discussion to see how those forms of government operate. A number of them are urban planners, so they had a good time talking with our planning department. But enough of me, what I'd like to do is ask each one of them to come up and introduce themselves and where they're from, and you have a map behind you to kind of see, and maybe we can get a laser pointer for our guests to point, maybe you have one. And they can show you where they're from, and what they're looking at getting out of this exchange.
Terrific. Who would like to come up first?
Again, my name is Britta Walter, and I come from the city of Nürnberg, which is in Bavaria, quite close here. It's the second-largest city in Bavaria, after Munich. And when I applied for the exchange, I wanted to get a closer look to the different in many ways how cities are organized. And I also wanted to improve my English.
Your English is terrific.
My name is Stefan Heinisch, I come from the city of Leipzig, which is in the eastern part of Germany. And Leipzig is the city where the peaceful revolution in 1989 started, in the Formul und Schiede. I work for the city of Leipzig, and I'm in charge of urban development planning, and so I'm really interested in how urban development in the United States work, and how do you work with public and private partnership?
Thank you.
My name is Mandy Krummel. I come from the city of Stendal, which is here, between Hannover and Berlin. It's a small city with 44,000 residents, and I work in the department for internal organization. And it's a great pleasure for me to be here in the US, here in Commerce City, and I want to learn as much as I can.
My name is Claudia Bierbaum. I'm from the city of Osnabrück, which is in the north, in Lower Saxony, like in the middle of Düsseldorf and Hannover. I'm an urban planner, and I'd like to gain my perspective in the view of planning, and in sustainable development, and how you focus on public and private interests as well.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Flannery.
So, Mr. Mayor, since we have a mayor and eight council members, I think we may be able to fit you all in a photo, unlike 40 or 90. So, if I could indulge you to maybe come out and have a photograph.
Yes, they are, they're gonna head up north and see our beautiful golf course and our community of reunion. You can sit there if you want. Would make my job so easy. Yeah, and it would be fine. If I take them home, we know where they're going. It is rewarding to see some of the benefit that has come from our city becoming more outward-looking than it has been in the past. Next thing on the agenda is citizen communication. And there were two public, oh, okay, there were two public comic rosters that were made available at the table at the entrance of council chambers. One roster is for non-agenda items, and the second is for action items. When I call your name, would you please come forward, state your name for the record, and your address? You're reminded you're limited to three minutes. City councils are reminded they are not to engage in discussion or debate, but may ask clarifying questions and express concern when appropriate. City manager will generally assign staff members to get the necessary information to solve an issue if that's what's come up. Our first person is gonna be Preston Gibson, who's the area manager for Excel. And I'm kind of excited about this, because I don't know that we had a big influence on it, but I think we probably had a small influence on it. And Mr. Preston, or Mr. Preston. Mr. Gibson's here to talk to us tonight. Good evening, sir.
Honorable Mayor, good evening. I am Preston Gibson, area manager for Excel Energy, address is 5460 West 60th Avenue in Arvada. We are very pleased to have come to resolution with the solar energy industry on our Solar Rewards Program. A couple of weeks ago, we didn't know how long it might take, but we're very pleased that it only took actually less than two weeks. We came to agreement last week, and the hearing was held by the Public Utilities Commission on Friday, and they unanimously approved our agreement. I'd like to go over just a few points, if I could, of the agreement. First, I'd like to tell you that the parties to the agreement include the Colorado Office of Consumer Council, the Governor's Energy Office, Western Resource Advocates, the Colorado Renewable Energy Society, the Solar Alliance, and the Colorado Solar Energy Industries Association, commonly known as COSIA, they testified a couple of weeks ago. The agreement allows us to continue to hold the line on costs and allow our incentives with the market demand. The agreement maintains Solar Rewards' investment cap of $97.3 million this year, and that's, I think I mentioned last time, about three times the amount spent in 2008, so it's been a very successful program, and to allow us to acquire up to an additional 60 megawatts of solar energy. And I can tell you, just as a point of reference, a typical big-box store like a Walmart or Target uses about one megawatt, so that might kind of put it in perspective. Looking at 60 megawatts is a maximum. The settlement defines when incentive levels will be reduced, and at what point programs and tiers are closed to new applications. It's more of a performance-based incentive program. There is some upfront incentive or rebate, especially for the small customer-owned facilities or units, but there's also a rebate, or in fact, an incentive that happens over a period of about 10 years, and in some cases, over 20 years, based on the energy that's derived from the solar facilities that are installed. When the program caps are reached, we'll be ahead of our schedule to reach the renewable energy standard for customer-sighted solar. Of course, the renewable energy standard for Colorado is 30%, and for these distributed systems, these on rooftops, it's 3%. And we expect to reach that by about 2018 or 2019. So, I see a light flashing, that must mean my time is up.
Nope, you still have 40 seconds, keep going.
Still have 40 seconds. Okay, the settlement is effective from the date the PUC approves it, which was last Friday, until, let's see, until the spring of 2012, when we'll actually be developing our next resource plan. So, hopefully, we'll also come to some resolution with a terrific new plan for the solar energy industry next year. But this year, we've got a plan that allows for 60 megawatts to be installed, and we're very pleased about that, very pleased about coming to resolution with the industry. And it was never our intention to put anyone out of work, to jeopardize any jobs. In fact, I can tell you just one final point, is that it's reported, I hear whistling over here and beeping there, and I don't know, but we think the program's been very successful since 2006, and creating, helping to create at least over 5,000 jobs in this industry here in Colorado, we're very pleased about that. So, that concludes my comments, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
And I do have a few people here. Mr. Moreno, you first?
Mr. Gibson, I just wanna appreciate you coming tonight and for your testimony when we did hear the resolution a few weeks ago. I applaud Excel and the solar industry for not seeing each other as opposite sides of the table on this one, but really partners in developing this new energy future for Colorado. I've always admired Excel's commitment to that, to the new energy economy, and to developing renewable energy sources. So, I really appreciate the fact that you sat down with the solar industry, and you guys hammered out a deal, and I think it's really encouraging, and says a lot about our future for energy in Colorado.
Thank you. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, I echo what Mr. Moreno said. I'm glad to see that everybody worked together and came to a resolvement with this. A couple of weeks ago, I was fortunate enough to take a tour on the Sand Creek Greenway Trail System, along with a gentleman from Excel, I think his name was Rob somebody.
Rob Osborne.
And I was unaware that Excel had donated so many grants and money, and so many volunteers to clean parts of that site up and all, and I'm really pleased with that. I don't think a lot of people realize that. So, again, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mackel Downey? Oops, yeah, Mr. Mackel Downey.
Mr. Gibson, thanks for coming back. It's great to have the update, it's exciting to see how quickly things transpired. I think the agreement that was announced last week is just very, very exciting. I think the fact that it helps to drive activity early in the program, I think is great, and hopefully that will help generate a sustained momentum of solar investment by both businesses and residences alike. So, again, thank you, and we appreciate you taking our words back. And obviously, the discussion that took place between COSIA and Excel and the other parties in the discussion was constructive, and I think Colorado was better for it. So, thank you very much, and please convey our appreciation to the rest of the guys at Excel.
Thank you, well, thank you. Thank you. And just as an aside, I worked last Thursday on a Habitat for Humanities House, and it was my wife and I and about 15 of your employees. And it was wonderful. Glad to hear that, thank you. Yes, it was nice to see your company out doing that volunteer work also. That was very nice. Thank you, thank you for coming. Next person on the list is Reba Droder.
Good evening. I am Reba Droder, and my address is 7505 East 121st Place, Thornton. And I am here tonight from the Historical Society. And this is a really special moment for us, because we are getting ready to have our second annual awards, Gene Klein Awards. And this year, it will not be a brunch, it will be a plated luncheon. And last year was our big birthday party, so you'll probably be happy to know that it won't last that long, we had a huge celebration. This year, the program will be completely about the following people that I'm going to tell you about, and many of you will recognize who they are. So, this is our, except for our membership, our regular meeting, you are the first to know who our awardees are. And in our opinion, this is the highest award that anybody in the city of Commerce City will ever get, the Gene Klein Award. As you know, Gene Klein is a legend here. She was a legend when she was alive, and we miss her greatly. We is a legend here. She was a legend when she was alive, and we miss her greatly. We have just been in receipt of a signed rod from President Bush to Jean. He actually signed that for her. And so that was pretty amazing, and her work with the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. So our intent is to only honor those who have profoundly affected the lives of the people here. So here they are. The first one is the Commerce City Rotary. This is their 50th year. And I just want to tell you that they have, they're all volunteers, and they have worked to combat hunger, improve health and sanitation, provide education and job training, promote peace, and eradicate polio. And right here in the city of Commerce City, I'm guessing that the amount of money they've spent on School District 14 is around $250,000. That's my guess right now. And they are completely committed to this community. Then we have Mr. Joe Gillis. And Mr. Gillis, just last year, was inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame, as a coach for Adams City High School. The work that he did at Adams City High School has never been, there's nothing comparable. In fact, I don't think in this state there's anything comparable to what he did in the 50s and 60s. He's very amazing. Then we have Mr. Hal Rarick, the longest-serving teacher, yes, that's exactly the response that we got, the longest-serving teacher in the state of Colorado. He just retired last year after 57 years. The accolades are huge on the websites about him, of people just writing about him all on their own, and how much he changed the lives of the men, women, and children of this community. And the last ones are Mr. and Mrs. Harlow and Shirley Leeper, who the Derby, the Commerce City Business and Professional Association, Shirley created that along with Al Klein.
Wonderful.
So we hope that you're able to attend, and I have invitations for you.
Excuse me, do you have a date and a time?
Yes. It is Sunday, May 1, 2011, at 1:00 p.m. at Worth Manor. And I'd like to give you these invitations, and I hope you all can come because these are some of the finest folks that you will ever meet.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's fine. I was going to save you the steps, but... Actually, I've got a few people. I was just waiting for Ms. Droder to get back down there before we started doing anything. Okay, Ms. Snyder.
Hi, Reba. I think these are all excellent, excellent choices. I'm excited to see every single person that's on this list. And Mr. Rarick, you know, was just, I mean, I could just sit here and talk about him until, you know, council's over because he had a profound effect on my life and many, many years that I spent with him, and I've been very close to him for pretty much my whole life. So...
He still has his jazz band.
Yeah, he's amazing. I played in the band with him for years and years and years. So he did have a huge impact on my school years. So all of these people are very fine choices, and so I want to thank you, and I will definitely be there. Thanks.
Mr. Bullock.
I just wanted to announce to council that I will be selling tickets. If you want to buy your tickets, get your tickets from me because I have a book of tickets, and I've been told that I've got to sell more than one. So anyone that needs tickets, please contact me for tickets.
Gee, there used to be someone else who would come here to sell tickets, but she was a whole lot nicer. Ms. Teeter.
Good evening, and I totally agree with the selection. These people meant a lot to me, and I've known them most of my life since I was raised here in the city, and last year attended that luncheon. It was absolutely fabulous.
There you go.
Just to let the audience know that a lot of history was given, especially by you, Mr. Gaylor. You did a terrific job last year.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next person is Deborah Bullock. Good evening, always nice to see you. More good news?
Good evening. My name is Deborah Bullock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street, Commerce City, Colorado. And I'm here tonight to talk about the visitor center at the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. As you know, it is due to open up in late May, and when we were at the final deletion, it was presented as the Prairie Legacy. Once this opens, we plan to proceed with our path of distinction, and I think some of you are aware of what that is. We are currently in the process of collecting names of all people involved, from the early pioneers all the way through to now, as what has happened in the arsenal. And that includes the farming families, people from the Army, the city of Commerce City, the employees who worked out there, past and present U.S. Presidents, congressional leaders, officials of the Department of the Interior, the EPA, and governors such as, and leaders such as Hank Brown, Gary Hart, Ken Kramer, Wayne Allard, Tim Wirth, Pat Schroeder, Ken Salazar, Bob Bupre, Roy Romer, Bill Owens, and Ray Fats, and that's just to name a few. And then there was the RAB. We have people, Kathy's been on the RAB, Renee sits on the RAB, Reba is on the RAB, and the CAB and the SAB, all these organizations that have something to do out there, scientists and environmentalists, community leaders such as Larry Ford and Jean Klein, Shell Oil, South Adams County Water and Sanitation District, South Adams County Fire Department, Tri-County Health, Colorado Health Department, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the RVO, Tetra Tech, and Foster Wheeler for the cleanup process, and many others. So as you can see, there are so many people involved with this. And it's our hope that you will partner with us on the path of distinction and to really do our history and to try to name everyone who has been involved. We've come to realize that it's really the citizens of Commerce City that made Congress stand up and pay attention to what was going on out there. And we also realize that everyone needs to be recognized, and the path of distinction is the way that we can do this. We also believe that no one person can take credit for this entire phenomenal area of our city, and we really want the Rocky Mountain Arsenal to stand as a beacon of our patriotism, bravery, tenacity, and government, and citizen cooperation forever. So we are asking you to partner with us, and once the visitor center is open, we will be having some meetings, and hopefully, we will be invited. You will invite us, we'll invite you. We want to be partners, and really do this right, and it'll be a wonderful thing. I have a letter from the Historical Society that I would like to give to you. Can I come up and do that?
There's going to be so many names, you're going to have to start at 56th and go all the way up, huh?
I know. It's amazing. We just don't want to leave anybody out.
No.
And it's a huge undertaking.
I'm breaking my own rule. I'm not supposed to talk. But have you been able to find all of the names of the farmers or the people that had lived on the arsenal?
You know, there is a map that Ernie Maurer has, and all of the farm families are on the map. So we hope to get that map.
That'd be great. Boy, that's been fascinating.
So it's a cool map. It's, I'm sure the arsenal has a copy of it also, but it's very detailed as to who lived where.
Ms. Teeter.
I want to thank both you and Ms. Droder for all the work that you have done. I mean, it's been months and months and even years, it seems like. So I'm ready for anybody to film me. I know at one time they asked to film me, and I don't know what happened, but whenever you get a chance, I'm willing. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready.
Ms. Carson.
I also just wanted to thank all of you for the hard work that you have done, making sure that this project happened. It has changed the lives of people in Commerce City, and I know you two women standing here have done a lot of work on that. And then I want to make sure that you got the message that I left.
I did.
Thank you.
Yes.
Husbands sometimes don't deliver those messages, do they?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next person on the list, Gier Mosserna. Good evening, sir. We just seem to be hanging out in all the same circles, you know? You know there's an election coming in November. I'm sorry, that was uncalled for.
14122, East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado. I'm just here to ask the question that I think Mrs. Snyder has been asking this past year, and that is, what's the situation on the Boys and Girls Club, and what's the situation on the funding? We were told at one time that we would have a report by February, and as of right now, we're almost through March and nothing whatsoever. It's just a communication. Where are we? If we're doing something, then let's do it. If not, then let the community know. So maybe we can return these funds so they can be reused somewhere else if we're not going to do anything with it. And the other part is that, in what I see, is maybe somehow that you can start some type of a commission for children. We're leaving our children behind in the decisions that you're making, and that's in the new area as well as down here. We bring in businesses to help us with this, but yet we don't give them the opportunity to participate or give back to our children and our community. Because maybe we're too busy growing that we forget the most important part, and that's our senior citizens and our children. I've always said if we can't take care of them, we shouldn't be a city. We have resolutions into play that are not being abided by. Why have a resolution if it's not abide or a goal to reach it? So that's all I'm asking, is where are we? And let us know where we're at. There is a concern there, otherwise, Mrs. Snyder wouldn't be asking where we are on this. And we have communication people that are not getting back to the community. And I'm sure that somewhere along the line, there's a misstep somewhere, but we need to bring that forth. And on the arsenal, keep in mind the indigenous people. They gave us that land. It was pure. We were the ones that ruined it. The Hispanic population, they did a lot of farming out there also. The ones that traveled through this area at the beginning are never mentioned, and it comes from a minority group that is now a minority group. But keep that in mind. We have a long history. Don't just take it back 50 years. Give credit where credit is due as you look at these trails. Our eagles were there a long time before we thought of Commerce City. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Flannery, I know that it's, Boys and Girls Club is on a pretty quick coming-up council meeting, so I know that's part of it. And I know that we discussed it at our retreat, and I think you're going to be rather pleased with how this is coming along. But Mr. Flannery, if I could turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor, I think what you've said is accurate. I think there's a lot of good discussion that's going on, but there's sensitivity to some of it because of the details of location and the like.
Yeah, correct. And we have to apologize for some of that because there's certain pieces, but when it finally comes out, I think you're going to be well pleased. As far as the Historical Society, you might want to just stop back there with Mrs. Bullock and talk to her because they're separate from our city, but that, what you said is probably a good idea.
I totally understand.
Terrific. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Carson. I'm sorry, Mr. Serna. Ms. Carson.
Mr. Serna, I just wanted to share with you my desire also to have a full-fledged youth commission in this city. I think you're correct. I think the youth is a voice that gets left out all the time. I think they play a crucial role in the development of the future of a city, and I think with what we all seen at the NLC this year, the attention that they have gotten nationwide, and everybody's quite interested. So yes, I would be very happy to see us go all the way forward with the youth commission.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno.
Mr. Serna, I just want to thank you for your continued advocacy for the Boys and Girls Club. And just to let you know that at the council retreat not too long ago, the Boys and Girls Club did make it onto a very high priority for this council. So I think that this is the year, especially when we're going to see a lot of progress being made on that front. And I think the community has long waited for it, and it needs to happen soon. So I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And I guess just to mention, ordinarily, we wouldn't have so much interaction, but it just was fitting tonight.
Right.
You know, it really was. Yes. Next item is approval of minutes, and there's two sets of minutes before council this evening for approval. The first set of minutes are minutes for the meeting of January 24, 2011. But before voting on the minutes, I need a motion to allow Mayor Pro Tem Snyder and Councilwoman Teeter to abstain from voting because of their excused absences. Mr. Mackel Downey?
So moved.
Mr. Johnson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow Mayor Pro Tem Snyder and Councilwoman Teeter to abstain. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I now need a motion to approve the minutes for January 24. Ms. Snyder. Oh, you're worn here. Mr. Mackel Downey.
Moved to approve the minutes of 1:24.
Okay, Mr. Moreno.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for January 24. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. The second set of minutes before council this evening are approval of the minutes for the meeting of February 7, 2011. But before voting on the minutes, I need a motion to allow Councilwoman Benson and Councilwoman Bullock to abstain from voting because of their excused absences. Mr. Johnson?
Moved to approve.
And Ms. Teeter.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to allow Councilwoman Benson and Councilwoman Bullock to abstain. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Now I'm open to a motion to approve the minutes of February 4. Ms. Snyder.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to approve the regular meeting minutes, February 7, 2011. Council seated.
Ms...I'm a little confused now. Mr. Johnson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same. Any discussion?
Just a point of discussion. On February 7, there is a mistake in the minutes. Just under Ordinance Z 894-11, it, on the second vote for the roll-call vote, it just doesn't say the original primary motion maker. It just says the second person. So I just wanted to let you know.
We'll correct that administratively. Okay, and Mr. Mackel Downey, was this just for before? Okay, that's not a problem taken care of. The next item is an executive session, and as we have talked about in the past, we were going to move all the executive sessions to the end because of the audience that was in here at the beginning. But because there are outside people who will be attending, we will be doing the executive session now, and so that's the next item on the agenda, and it's to discuss an economic development opportunity. I'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. You can read the motion for the item off of your agenda. Ms. Snyder.
Yes, moved to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-64024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning an economic development opportunity in Commerce City.
Okay, Mr. Mackel Downey.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same. Will be an executive session anticipated 15 minutes, about 15? Maybe a little more? Okay. That's a government 15 minutes. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Sometimes it's weird. Started out more than discovered. Oh, you can catch him late. It's sound like we don't, can't get it. We don't have him. I went through all everything we have, and that's why I thought John Howard would be nice. I couldn't, I couldn't bring it up. Something like that. He sat right here, he just. Quite a few of them, quite a few of people. Oh, in our circle, don't come down here because they're very intimidating. Arch it on there, they... I don't even think they can get on it. Okay, they can't get on it. That's not saying much, I have a hard time listening to what you're saying.
Someone's just like, tonight, I was thinking that our homepage has...
Yeah?
I wish the count.
There is. Okay, you know, the homepage, you show me tonight where it says home. You get your homepage, you come over to the left-hand side, scroll clear down the page that says Audio of the District, video. And you push that, and then you get into the...
Right, but there isn't a place for the homepage to say there. To push the calendar, click the calendar, and it says nicely. And then there's a place, there's no other link to take it to the general.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Pam does it every week, she writes, she writes us up before seven.
Well, yeah, there's, there's from the calendar, there's a place to take you to this.
Yeah, I don't know. What happened with old fire in there? Are you getting them ironed out for a lot? I know that he's industrial.
He thoned I won.
Yeah, he's done it, he said that he done it.
Well, you know, he said that he didn't remember. He said he didn't remember doing any of that. And unfortunately, she actually spoke in favor of I won's attorney. So he's actually in the minutes.
Well, it don't matter.
Well, I know, but I mean, he was, he was saying that no one told him.
Well, but see, that's a different story than what he said down to the Homeowners Association this last Monday. And I told him, I said, no. You want to contribute taxes and stuff like that.
He did, I mean, actually, he's on the records. He's in the minutes, so he kind of didn't, you know, he kind of...
Selective memory loss.
Yeah, and he was like, well, okay, talk to you later.
Well, is he going to even try? As of right now?
Well, I think what he's thinking about is, if he loses a couple more, he might rearrange someone to try and open up a little parcel, maybe see what kind of interest he could get in a whole section. And I was like, hey, that would totally be allowed. So hopefully that happens.
Well, he came, he called me up, trying to, saying that he couldn't put another bowl in there. So I got ahold of Brian and Luke, by the way.
Yeah.
And he said, hey, he said, he's not zoned, Home Park District. And I called him back up, and I said, when they, and actually went to the city, I said, where did you go? He said, I'm in I won. I said, well, that's your problem.
That's right.
I'm not involved.
They wanted to have his K D two, right? He wanted to be available for redevelopment, and he wanted to be able to sort of maintain the Home Park.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So that, that, that's a lead.
It's done.
Good.
Well, the story is much easier, yes.
I don't know what they're talking about.
Jason?
Yes. Thank you. You look good with my Chanel. Thank you.
Okay. So that's all.
Tell them you have a latitude, whatever this is.
Okay.
E sixty-five, huh?
Okay.
Tell them you got a broken keyboard.
Okay.
And what they can do is, I think they'll send it us. I think James can install that.
Okay, so just the letter or the whole thing has to be changed?
We'll replace this whole piece.
Oh, okay, because I've tried to snap it back in there and it's right back there. Little things in there?
It goes down.
Okay.
So they'll just get it.
So just call with me. Okay, we'll do.
And if we have one around, we'll just swap that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I never forget my purse.
You did. I said, is she coming back?
No, I'm such a good get after here.
We didn't know if you were going to rest or not.
Let's go.
So it's like, well, uh...
I was freezing in there.
It's cold down.
So how do you know?
It is, yeah. Okay, uh, we are back and no action. Strictly information at the executive session. Uh, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda tonight, so that makes it really easy. Um, I'd be open to a motion. Oh, boy, you're all lit up already, huh? Uh, Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Snyder?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? City Attorney, would you want to read the title?
Title reads Resolution twenty-eleven dash thirteen. Resolution Appointing Members to Designated Boards and Commissions in Commerce City.
It's pretty easy, huh?
No.
Uh, request a roll call vote. And Mr. Flannery, have all of the people been notified or in the process of? Yes, thank you. A roll call vote, please.
Lashing?
Up, there it is.
There it is, thank you.
Okay, and the vote is nine zero. Consent agenda is passed. Thank you very much. There's just one resolution tonight that was not included on the consent agenda because it requires a separate voice vote. It's Resolution two thousand and eleven dash fourteen. A resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between Adams County and the City of Commerce City. Now I ask City Manager Jerry Flannery invite staff to come forward to discuss this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Greg Clements from Public Works.
Good evening, sir. You know, we just don't see enough of you anymore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may have remembered the Monaco neighborhood, the improvements that Adams County has done in that area over the years. There's one remaining area left. Uh, it's called the Dupont Project. And we discussed this last year during the reappropriation time. Um, the proposal or the request from Adams County is for the city to share the proportionate cost of the improvements there, which are street and drainage improvements. The area that is, has been annexed to the city is approximately one-third. So the share that this county is requesting is one-third of that construction cost. The total construction cost is one million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, making the city's share six hundred and twenty-five thousand. The council last year at reappropriation time appropriated the one hundred and twenty-five thousand annual appropriation for that. And it was paid, uh, it's a five-year repayment schedule. And this is the agreement that, uh, makes that project move forward. Are there questions?
Question from council? Not seeing any. Makes it pretty easy, huh?
Thank you very much.
Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. McAldoney?
Move to approve Resolution two thousand and eleven dash fourteen.
Mr. Moreno, did you not want to second it?
I will second. I just had a comment as well.
Did you want to make it before?
Well, why don't we do the second? And then? I will second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Moreno?
Um, I just wanted to add that I did go the extra step of dividing our share by the exact cost, and it was approximately one-third. So I was very impressed with that. And I actually did have a question about, um, are we, are we still accepting, um, residential annexations on a voluntary basis in that area? Because one-third of the homes are in Commerce City. The rest are in unincorporated Adams County. If a resident wanted to voluntary annex in that area, are we accepting that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Moreno. Qualified yes. Um, and the reason I say qualified is because I don't know if the council has ever annexed a lot, per se. Um, I don't know if we've had that conversation as a, as a, as a group. Um, but typically what we've done is said the broader area. If there was a broader area, even a portion of what's open, what's a, what's an enclave, even if a portion of that maybe wanted to come in. I think the approach has been, uh, some citizens in the area have been very active and holding meetings with the city and the county to just discuss and compare services and educate everybody on where we're at. So we've always left that door open. We've never said, no, we don't want to. Um, but we, we, we always extend the offer to help them in any way they, they seek. So if, if, if the question is individual lots, we really don't have a policy on that. I suppose you could do that, but that would be a lot of paperwork, um, to do internally and for them to go through that process just for one lot. So we would recommend a much more significant chunk, maybe twenty lots. But there's like a, I think, twelve hundred lots out there.
Yes. Thank you, you look good with my Chanel. Thank you.
Okay.
Tell them you have a latitude, whatever this is.
Okay.
E sixty-five, I think.
Okay.
Tell them you got a broken keyboard.
Okay.
And what they can do is, I think they'll send it to us, I think James can install that.
Okay, so just the letter or the whole thing has to be changed?
We'll replace this whole piece.
Oh, okay, because I've tried to snap it back in there and it's right back there. Little things in there?
It go down.
Okay.
So they'll just get it.
So just call with me. Okay, we'll do.
And if we have one around, we'll just swap that.
Thank you, appreciate that. I never forget my purse.
You did. I said, is she coming back?
No, I'm such a good get after here.
We didn't know if you were in the restaurant or where.
Like, let's go. I was freezing in there.
It's cold down.
It is, yeah. Okay, we are back and no action, but strictly information at the executive session. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda tonight, so that makes it really easy. I'd be open to a motion. Oh, boy, you're all lit up already, huh? Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Snyder?
Second emotion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? City Attorney, would you want to read the title?
Title reads, Resolution twenty-eleven dash thirteen, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions in Commerce City.
It's pretty easy, huh? Request a roll call vote. And Mr. Flannery, have all of the people been notified or in the process of? Yes, thank you. Roll call vote, please. Oh, there it is. Okay, and the vote is nine zero. Consent agenda is passed, thank you very much. There's just one resolution tonight that was not included on the consent agenda because it requires a separate voice vote. It's Resolution two thousand and eleven dash fourteen, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between Adams County and the City of Commerce City. Now I ask City Manager Jerry Flannery invite staff to come forward to discuss this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Mr. Greg Clements from Public Works.
Good evening, sir. You know, we just don't see enough of you anymore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may have remembered the Monaco neighborhood, the improvements Adams County has done in that area over the years. There's one remaining area left. It's called the Dupont Project, and we discussed this last year during the reappropriation time. The proposal, or the request from Adams County is for the city to share the proportionate cost of the improvements there, which are street and drainage improvements. The area that is, has been annexed to the city is approximately one-third, so the share that this county is requesting is one-third of that construction cost. The total construction cost is one million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, making the city share six hundred and twenty-five thousand. The council last year at reappropriation time appropriated the one hundred and twenty-five thousand annual appropriation for that, and it was paid. It's a five-year repayment schedule, and this is the agreement that makes that project move forward. Are there questions?
Question from council? Not seeing any. Makes it pretty easy, huh?
Thank you very much.
Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. McElhany?
Move to approve Resolution two thousand and eleven dash fourteen.
Mr. Moreno, did you not want to second it?
I will second, I just had a comment as well.
Did you want to make it before, or why don't we do the second?
Absolutely. I will second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Moreno?
I just wanted to add that I did go the extra step of dividing our share by the exact cost, and it was approximately one-third, so I was very impressed with that. And I actually did have a question about, are we, are we still accepting residential annexations on a voluntary basis in that area? Because one-third of the homes are in Commerce City, the rest are in unincorporated Adams County. If a resident wanted to voluntary annex in that area, are we accepting that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Moreno. Qualified yes, and the reason I say qualified is because I don't know if the council has ever annexed a lot, per se. I don't know if we've had that conversation as a, as a, as a group. But typically, what we've done is said the broader area, if there was a broader area, even a, a portion of what's open, what's a, what's an enclave, even if a portion of that maybe wanted to come in, I think the approach has been, some citizens in the area have been very active and holding meetings with the city and the county to just discuss and compare services and educate everybody on where we're at. So we've always left that door open. We've never said, no, we don't want to. But we, we, we always extend the offer to help them in any way they, they seek. So if, if, if the question is individual lots, we really don't have a policy on that. I suppose you could do that, but that would be a lot of paperwork to do internally and for them to go through that process just for one lot. So we would recommend a much more significant chunk, maybe twenty lots, but there's like a, I think twelve-hundred lots out there. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
You okay now? Okay. I've had a motion and a second to approve this, and we've had discussion. Will the City Attorney please read the title?
Title reads, Resolution twenty-eleven dash fourteen, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between Adams County, Colorado and the City of Commerce City regarding cost sharing for a public improvements project within and adjacent to the Dupont Neighborhood.
Okay. Had a motion and a second. City Attorney has read the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes, thank you very much. It's just one ordinance tonight on first reading. It's ordinance eighteen fifty-four, ordinance amending various sections of the Land Development Code. These particular amendments were presented and discussed at council meeting on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven, with the consensus to move forward for an ordinance hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to introduce ordinance eighteen fifty-four by council seated and approve the ordinance on first reading. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, move to approve ordinance eighteen fifty-four, our first reading, council is seated.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the City Attorney please read the title?
Title reads, ordinance eighteen fifty-four, an ordinance amending various sections of the Land Development Code.
Okay. There we go. I'm requesting a roll call vote, please. Okay. Motion, uh, the ordinance passes on first reading, nine zero, thank you very much. We now move on to study items, and the first item is the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven presentation on the Commerce City Comprehensive Plan indicators. Mr. Flannery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. This is being presented by Chris Kramer, Planning Director.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. This is somewhat of a momentous occasion. This is our first-ever annual report of indicators from the Comprehensive Plan. As council may recall, last year, the city passed the Comprehensive Plan, City Council passed the Comprehensive Plan, and one of the key elements in here that was discussed was continuing to monitor and measure various indicators and benchmarks along the way. How do we know if we're getting there if we don't measure the progress? So, as a result of that, tonight, you are going to get your first taste into what will be an ongoing annual report provided to City Council about various benchmarks and indicators. A little bit, this is our agenda, it's going to be a very, a fairly quick presentation tonight, but we are going to go over the whole concept of the indicators report, how to, how to utilize the guide, the different types of indicators, there's really two main categories, a few examples, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions, should council have any. And as, again, as background, we passed the Comprehensive Plan last year, and, and one of the key elements that we discussed was the, the desire to measure progress, benchmark our goals, and monitor that as we go. So, as council may have seen from the, the packet, there's a lot of different types of indicators and a lot of different measurements that you saw in the report. So what is an indicator? It, it's, it's a snapshot in time, for two thousand and ten in this case, of the status of a particular aspect or element of a particular system. And by itself, really, an indicator is, is, is a, a small measurement in, in, by itself. Becomes more powerful, however, when you can combine multiple indicators, especially across multiple systems, because that's when trends start to emerge. Trends are beneficial for a variety of groups, city staff, but also for decision-makers, like Planning Commission, or especially in this case, City Council. The Comprehensive Plan is a living document, it certainly provides a blueprint for our future, but it also needs to be flexible, as we discussed in our presentations from last year. Course corrections are sometimes needed, and these indicators are a great way to either A, help us hold tight to the vision established, or to make course corrections when they're needed. Again, like I said, this is the first year. One thing to keep in mind, we, this is the, because this is the first year, a lot of times those trends are not evident. When we often only have one year, it's sort of in a vacuum, if you will. And so there's not really much to be able to tell, we're, we're improving, or, or we're, we're getting worse. So this first year, Council, if you could just be patient, we're, we're sort of establishing a baseline. Next year, when we come back, you'll be able to start to see trends emerge. There's a couple in here that, that we were able to get some past year's data, but for the most part, we're just establishing the baselines this year. We do have indicators for each one of the chapters contained in the Comprehensive Plan, and as council may recall, those are land use, transportation, housing, appearance and design, parks and rec, et cetera. So we actually have indicators for each one of those chapters. Actually, in total, we have forty indicators in this particular report that you have in front of you. It is expected that as we move forward into the future, we'll keep adding indicators that really help provide some insight for City Council and decision-makers. So that forty will probably grow over time. Real quick, user's guide, I won't go into this too much, but you can see each one of those indicators has basically the same format. We have an initial description, what is the actual indicator. We provide some form of data in all sorts of hopefully user-friendly formats, charts, tables, graphs. We provide a little bit of analysis, what does this number mean, and how, how can it affect our decision-making moving forward? And then we compare that to the desired trend, and the actual trend. You know, sometimes we want a number to actually go down. Number of crimes committed in a particular area, we would actually like to see the trend go down, not up. Whereas other times, we'd like to see that, that number go up. Number of new business starts, we'd like to see that trend go up. So we provide a comparison about how those trends compare to each other, and then obviously we cite all of our sources. I would, I would request council understand that a lot of the indicators we provided, while this is in some ways a scorecard, it's not necessarily a report card. Some of these indicators, there's really, a, a lot of the influences outside of the ability of the city to control. And so when you look, there's really two main categories. There's direct influence, where we have indicators where we have really a lot of control over the outcome, or the trend. However, there's also a lot of those indicators that we have an indirect influence. And when you look at the two examples we have here, trail miles constructed over the past year, well, we have a lot of ability to control that number. When you compare that to the total number of residential units constructed over the past year, we have some ability to influence that, but certainly, a, a lot of the decision-making for that realm falls to the home builders, to the developers, frankly, to the national and world economy, credit markets. There's a whole variety of factors that influence that. Nonetheless, it's still valuable information for, for decision-makers to have at their disposal to help, help shape policy. So now, at this point, I am going to go through all forty of these indicators in excruciating detail. Okay, all right, I guess I only have four that I'm going to go through. I do have four, just to give council and the audience a little taste of what's included. By way of information, council, in your retreat packet, actually, there was an initial copy of this. The idea moving forward is that this is prepared prior to council's planning retreat, so that council has a good snapshot of the status of things to help inform them when their priority setting for the upcoming year. So our goal every year is to provide this report to you before the planning retreat. And with that said, it's good to get a taste of, of what kinds of things you can expect to see moving forward. One example, chapter four is the land use chapter in the Comprehensive Plan, talks about what types of categories of uses could be ware within the city. Here's a, a type of indicator we have. For the year two thousand and ten, we had twenty-seven types of cases, zoning, conditional use permits. The number of cases where the actual outcome is in agreement with the future land use plan, which is this map that you see in the lower left, that's not there for you to actually study, it's far too small. But you can see, we had twenty-seven cases processed, twenty-six of them were consistent with the future land use plan. That's a really great number. We hope that that stays that high. However, just, let's say, for example, moving forward next year, the number goes down. Doesn't, again, it's not a report card, it doesn't necessarily mean that staff didn't provide good information, that applicants didn't follow through, or that council wasn't paying attention to the Comprehensive Plan. Maybe it's an indicator that the Comprehensive Plan needs to be reevaluated, because there's some certain conditions in certain places where the, the future land use plan is now out of date. We won't know that, though, unless we measure those types of results. So this is a good, a, a example of the type of indicator that we have that can provide a lot of information.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Was the one, the one case that was not consistent, was that the rezone of the property that we allowed in the Tiffany neighborhood?
No, it was, it was actually the, the liquor, the conditional use permit for the liquor store on Seventy-seventh and US eighty-five.
Okay.
Which is called out to be industrial in the future land use plan.
Gotcha, thank you.
The, another example, in chapter seven, that's our Housing and Neighborhoods chapter, we look at a mix of housing types. So you can see in this particular instance, we actually use a pie chart to illustrate for the number of new units within the city, what was the, the breakout? What was the makeup of those different housing by type? And you can see, obviously, a fair, a large percentage of those are going to be single-family detached, which anecdotally is consistent with prior years. The Comprehensive Plan calls for there to be a, to maintain a mix of housing types. So over time, we'll be able to measure, say, maybe we need to increase the amount of multifamily, or maybe we need to decrease that. Again, having these measures will help us make those kind of determinations. Chapter nine is about transportation. There's a lot of indicators in there about roads and, you know, traditional arterial projects, but we also have one about transportation. It's more than, I'm sorry, transit. It's, it's more than just roads. You can see here, we have all the various routes, RTD routes that go through Commerce City, and what their boardings are. So an example of one where, in a vacuum, we only have one year's data, it's a little hard to know, is that good or is that bad? But we've at least established a baseline, next year, we should be able to see, are we improving our boardings, or are they going down? And if they are going down, what can we do to improve them? Finally, the last example I have, cultural facilities and tourism. This is an example of, you know, one that was sort of out of our control, we may be able to indirectly influence it, but it's certainly out of our control. Annual visits to Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. Again, it's, we're establishing a baseline. I would fully expect with the opening of the visitor center to occur this year, this number should skyrocket next year. So with that said, again, this is, this is the first year, we have a lot of our indicators that are a little bit lonely, because they, they don't have anything to compare them against, but we have to start somewhere, and so with that, we're really excited. I got to tell you, as staff, this is something we've been promoting for a long time, is measuring and monitoring your, your success or your progress. So we're excited to be here and present this. So, staff is available for any questions you might have.
Terrific. Mr. Moreno, did you have something else? Okay.
Well, Mr. Kramer, I, I almost wish we would have gone through those forty indicators in excruciating detail, because I found some of the information presented in our packet really, really interesting. You know, for example, I, I was a little taken aback by the amount of multifamily and high-density housing that is called for in our Comprehensive Plan, and how little of that we actually have today. I think that would have been an absolute great priority for this council to go into the retreat, knowing, so I, I'm encouraged that, that, that we will have this information before the retreat later in future years. The other was a couple, just a couple of the other interesting information, pieces of information I saw was, the majority of our schools at Adams fourteen are overcapacity, and not by small numbers, by hundreds of students in some cases. I think that's, you know, obviously something that's not subject for this, for this council, but something absolutely to keep in mind. It was a very interesting, and then the other piece was the, the relatively low scores of walkability that we have, both in the northern range and in the core city. You know, I was excited to see that Derby fares fairly well on that scale, but, but we, it'd be a good thing for this council to keep in mind everything that we can do to increase that walkability and, and decrease people's dependency on their cars.
Mr. Bullock?
I want to echo Mr. Moreno's comments, because I found this very interesting, too, and it's a benchmark now that we have something to start at and contribute to our retreat, because I was reading some of those numbers and some of the financial numbers and everything. All of this was so interesting to me, in the fact, and the walkability numbers, that we need to get on it with making this city more walk-friendly, so people aren't jumping in a car all the time. But I really enjoyed this report, sitting up there, reading it today, because I read it in depth, but thank you so much for your time and your effort, and your, your whole department.
Mr. McElhany?
Just quickly echo the comments from Mr. Moreno and Mr. Bullock. I think, you know, I'm a big fan of fact-based decision-making, and having this tool in hand is, you know, going to be a great tool for us, and I think, especially with your efforts to have that available to the council in advance of the planning retreat, it really positions us well to come in, and I, I see this really neat evolution of our planning activity going forward, where with citizen input and staff input and then metrics and analysis like this, we can really sit down and have a, I think, an ever more constructive planning cycle, so, thank you. I'll be excited to see how this, the trend starts to look next year, and, and again, I think it's important for all of us to take time to really see what's there today, but remember that it's, it's baseline data for the most part at present, so it's, it's good to know it now, and see where, where it trends as we get that next round of data next year.
And actually, in response to that, you, you mentioned using this at the, the retreats. I, I neglected to mention that this is our first year, we are going to be adding some additional indicators. If council goes through a retreat or a regular meeting, and you'd like to see additional indicators start being tracked, there's a whole big list in the actual report about our ability to do that, and sometimes the available data isn't there. But if council would find certain indicators or scores to be very helpful, oh my gosh, please let us know, we would jump at the chance. This is really here to help you, so if you have specific ones, let us know.
The one thing I'll just add to that, I think, you know, in the spirit of helping the community see itself, we, we have talked a lot about that at the retreat, and just how we continue to evolve and enhance our communication with the community. I would love to see a way to sort of break this out, and almost showcase elements of these learnings, and granted, they're baseline today, but, you know, we've got a, a communication vehicle in our, in our control, and it would be great to have a feature, essentially, in that regular paper that highlights a piece of this. Takes a piece of the comp plan, takes a set of these indicators, and, and puts some wrapper around them to help the community see, see itself, how it's growing, how it's changing, a little bit, a little bit about itself that it may not have known, and I think, to the extent we can use this in, you know, ways for us to make decisions, for the community to see itself better, spark ideas, whatever the case might be, I, I think it would be neat to see, and see if we can explore some of those if council supports that idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Flannery? The next item, some residential garage regulations.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this item will be presented, well, I think I'm going to give it to Brian first to introduce Patrick.
Patrick, always good to see you.
It's not very often that I get in front of you, folks.
I know.
It's nice to see you all.
Just, good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. Just a very brief introduction before I hand the microphone over to Mr. Buckley. Several weeks ago, Community Development Staff, and I believe Members of Council, received concerns from residents in the area of Sixty-sixth Way and Holly Street, that there was a garage being converted illegally to living space. We did investigate that issue, we have some information to share with you tonight. At that time, council had asked us to report back to you, but as part of the presentation, we also wanted to share some information about what residents can do with residential garages and what they can't do. There are certain improvements that can be made to garages, so we thought it might be helpful to prevent, present some additional background information tonight about the appropriate use of garages in residential areas. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Buckley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a very brief presentation for you folks this evening. If you have questions, please feel free to jump in anywhere that you would like. We're talking tonight about accessory dwellings. Of course, these pictures illustrate one that we're dealing with right now, actually, with the bottom picture sort of illustrative of the door of the primary dwelling, and what you see then in the of the door of the primary dwelling, and what you see then in the background, of course, would be a, what's considered an accessory dwelling. And for the purpose of this presentation tonight, these are the type of dwellings that we're speaking of in residential zone districts. Council may have heard complaints recently about a detached garage on Sixty-sixth Way being converted to a dwelling and being used as a dwelling. City staff has received similar complaints about this structure. Pictures there sort of illustrate the, the structure that we're, is in question in the backyard of this dwelling. Both Neighborhood Services Division and the Building Safety Division investigated this complaint, and visited the property, made contact with the owner. And he was gracious enough to let city in, to take a look at what was going on in his garage. And so we inspected this garage for violations of the building code, as well as the land development code, basically the zoning regulations applicable to that property. The inspection revealed that the structure is being used for legal residential accessory uses. It does not contain provisions for living, sleeping, cooking, eating, or sanitation. And those are important words there. I'll cover that a little bit more deep, in more detail later. And it's not being used by the owner or others as a rental property. Basically, the garage did not contain a bathroom, kitchen, bedroom, or other facilities that would designate it as a dwelling or dwelling unit. It's important to note, a dwelling generally means a one- or two-family dwelling, either standalone, single-family residence, or two-family residence, as you would have in a duplex, where a dwelling unit is a series of apartments, basically, or something of that nature, linked together. So there's a little bit of a distinction between dwelling and dwelling unit, although, for the most part, they, they generally mean the same under a zoning ordinance. We couldn't find any signs of unpermitted work or occupancy violations under the city's zoning regulations and residential building code. So we didn't take any further action. We closed the case and have made no further contact with the owner. That led to a number of questions for our staff, and, and we assume that city council may need to have a little bit of background and information on this. And so the real crux of this presentation is to basically tell you the process that we would go to, to issue a building permit to construct or create an accessory dwelling. First and foremost, the property zoning has to allow for its use. You cannot proceed to building permit if the zoning would not support its use. And quite frankly, the city zoning district standards are set up where accessory dwellings are not permitted. In front of you are the four main residential zoning districts for residential properties, and not a single one of them would allow an accessory dwelling. It's my understanding, through interaction with the Planning Division, that history tells us that previous city councils were interested in excluding accessory dwellings. And we know these sometimes as guest houses, mother-in-law apartments. They're known by a variety of names. But previous city councils have been interested in prohibiting them, and at least on the books since nineteen eighty-seven, and carried over to the new land development code, those prohibitions continue in all four main residential districts. What is a dwelling? We need to know what a dwelling is. Our building code and our LDC both contain definitions of a dwelling, and those are important definitions, because they would be used to make a factual determination if we had one existing. It would be, it would need to meet that very strict and narrow definition for the city staff to take action. The LDC defines a dwelling unit as a complete housekeeping unit. The residential building code defines a dwelling unit to include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. If it doesn't have all those provisions, then it is not necessarily a dwelling unit. And that's key as we go further into this. And basically, the housekeeping unit and dwelling unit are essentially the same. So the definitions that control these units are pretty much similar in both the building code and the LDC. So what does this mean? If it has a kitchen sink, oven, or stove, basically all these provisions for permanent, permanent provisions, excuse me, for eating, sleeping, cooking, and sanitation is a dwelling. Again, if it doesn't have all four of these provisions or meet this definition, we can't deal with it. But in this case, if somebody proposes to us a new structure, or remodel, or renovations to an existing accessory building, if they are proposing provisions for eating, sleeping, sanitation, and cooking, we cannot issue a permit in any of these zoning districts. Many times when owners come to the city and ask about their various uses that are permitted, and we tell them, of course, you cannot create a second rental apartment or a place as an accessory dwelling, the next question is then, what can we use this accessory building for? What are our permitted uses? And it's important to note that primarily, those uses have to be conducted by the family that owns and/or occupies the primary dwelling, meaning that would prohibit uses by, of these, of these accessory structures by people other than the family. Having said that, this is a short list of some examples of the various uses that could be permitted by the city, which we do all the time. We've had folks come and obtain permits to put electrical, to put plumbing, to put other improvements into an accessory dwelling, to convert it to a use such as a greenhouse, a recreation room for the children, garden center, private office, places of that nature that aren't open to the public, that aren't being used by anybody other than the family. The Building Safety Division investigates several of these complaints a year involving accessory dwellings. Usually, these complaints come sometimes from dissatisfied renters who find the conditions to be questionable. Occasionally, we get complaints from neighbors who are concerned about the use of the property. And on occasion, we also get complaints through the Neighborhood Services Division, who are out, of course, in the code enforcement, and come across these on a regular basis. Basically, since I've been with the city on three years, going on three years now, of all the accessory dwellings that have been investigated by the Building Division, we have found that none of them have been legal. They've either been a violation of either the land development code, or the residential building code, or in some cases, both. And we've had no choice but to order their removal. And removal basically means vacation, residents moving out, and order given to the property owner to return it to an accessory building, to remove the unpermitted work that went on inside their electrical, plumbing, and other finishes, and basically return it to an accessory use that's consistent with the residential districts. So to summarize that, if the property zoning doesn't allow for their use at the time they were constructed, and there's no record of a building permit issued for their construction, then we proceed on the assumption that they are illegal structures. Of course, we involve the city's legal department to make sure that we're proceeding with care and how we deal with these. But these do rear their head more often than you would think, and we have to address them head-on, and basically return them to those accessory uses. And we just wanted to give you a rundown of how those regulations apply and what we deal with on those. So, short presentation. If you have any questions or need more information.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, thank you for this information. So this particular, quote, garage is not considered a dwelling? Because, are you saying that he does not have the sleeping, cooking, eating, and sanitation?
That's correct. He basically has a garage with a television out there, sort of a man cave, I guess, if you will. But it really doesn't rise to the level where we have people living in it on a regular basis and using it as a dwelling.
And he's not renting it out or anything, just wanting to watch TV out there?
Basically, that's absolutely correct.
And he does have a permit for any of the improvements that he made?
We're not aware of any improvements that he has made to the structure that would have required a building permit. He's been doing some work on it, painting and doing some fix-up of it. But everything that we researched showed that he had permits in the past for everything he needed, and, and didn't need any current permits.
So he may just be hanging out there to get away from his wife, then?
I, I didn't want to say that, but you never know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carson?
Well, I'm at a hundred percent. Heard of the man cave, so. We have one. I love it. But I did have a question from one of the residents. A lot of the lots on Perris Street are quite large. They were wondering, is there a difference if you attached that garage by a breezeway, and you build this unit where a college-age student can take up residency there?
Your own college-age student?
Your own, your own. And then...
And there are some provisions that allow you to, if you have connected structures, then it's part of the principal structure and no longer considered to be an accessory. But there are specific ways that has, that, that would have to be done to allow it to become the part of the principal structure. And the use could be used by a family member, but renting it to a third party would be a zoning issue.
So once that student decided to move on, grandma could then move in?
Sure.
But it, so they could go
Sure.
ahead with this. There's just some stipulations that have to happen with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further. Thank you very much for your report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is administrative council business. And again, this is not reports, and this is not things that could be handled on Ask Three C, but something where you need to have some input or agreeable from the council. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, this evening I have a couple requests. We were invited last year by two different cities to have a joint meeting. One was with the city of Brighton, and they hosted it. The other was with the city of Thornton. And I would like to recommend or request that Commerce City host a joint meeting with these two cities. Bring them in and show them about our thing, you know, our city and all, and, and talk different intergomo IGAs together, just stuff like that. I think that would be nice if we could host something like that with them.
Okay. Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
You easily can, sir.
All three of us, or one-on-one?
I think we might as well just have the one with, you know, and just have the three together.
Okay.
Might be a little easier and less costly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And now, speaking of costs...
Are you going to go on to something else?
Yes.
Anyone on council have any challenge with that request? Mr. Moreno?
I just think it's a great idea and really important that we continue the dialogue with those cities.
Okay.
With the communications and all.
Seeing none, it goes to Mr. Flannery. Good.
Okay.
You're on still, Ms. Teeter.
Okay. Secondly, I want the audience to know that request I'm going to be asking isn't, if you had to eat what we had to eat lately, we either have a pizza, or one of the sandwiches out there, or a chili, what is that we had tonight?
Nice, because you don't want to talk.
No, I know. I'm just saying, it's very limited what, what, what we can purchase with the amount of money. And I would like to propose to raise that part of our budget from two thousand to three thousand, and maybe have something a little better. Most of us live far away, and by the time we get off of our jobs, go home, get dressed, changed, we don't have time to, to prepare dinner ourselves. And I didn't want a debate tonight, I just wanted to vote on this.
Okay. Mr. Moreno, did you have a comment, or is that from before?
Comment on this? I've went back and forth on this one. You know, you're right. We don't get, we don't eat lavishly or anything like that. But I am going to have to be against this, just because we had this discussion at our retreat not too long ago, not this past retreat, but the retreat before that. And the council did decide to keep it at the same level. You know, I just have concerns with the fact that, you know, our council budget continually seems to be growing. So, you know, if I had my way, I'd eliminate the food budget. But understanding that that's probably not going to happen, I, I am going to be against any increase.
Okay.
Ms. Carson?
You brought this up on a night that, and I have, it seems like, more of these evenings than not, that I don't even get to go home from work.
Mm-hmm.
And so, as Mr. Moreno said, yes, I, I think we should be quite the steward of the citizens' money. But I will say, it is very difficult, and as, I don't know anybody in the audience, seeing what time I walked in tonight, maybe I should plan better and put a lunch in my bag or something. But, so I, I have a, a sandwich in my bag. I haven't even been able to eat that. But it is, I'm, I'm caught in both places, Ms. Teeter. I, I agree with you that if, if we're going to have food, and I, and I won't name a company, but there's only so much pizza that I can honestly stand to eat. So, and, and I don't think it's very healthy. So if, if we're going to do this, the money does have to either be increased, or I say, let's just stop it all together.
Okay. Mr. Ben?
Mr. Bullock, did you change your mind?
I'll just go away to the vote.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Benson?
Well, personally, this doesn't make any difference to me at all, because I have a chance to eat, I guess, just about any time that I want to. But I know that there are some people on this council who don't have that opportunity, and I'm going to vote for this, just to help them. I don't, I don't care whether we have anything to eat at all, really. If it's here, I'll eat it. But just to support the people that don't have the time to eat, I'll vote for it. It's a very small amount of money. I mean, we argue about pennies, and you don't spend millions of dollars.
Okay. Mr. McElDowney?
I guess my concern is that we have, more nights than not, the food goes uneaten, or a good portion of it goes uneaten. And so if the choices are not to our liking, then we need to be very clear on building a list of recommended vendors that we work with, and a list of excluded vendors, so that the food doesn't go unused. I think we need to be more creative with how we use the available dollars. If we think about the current allotment, it gives us, if we take an estimate of, what, forty-five meetings a year, forty-two to forty-five meetings a year, and a two-thousand-dollar budget, it's five-fifty ahead per meeting. It's not unreasonable. And to Mr. Benson's point, most nights, two or three people don't eat at all. So if you spread the available dollars around the folks that need a meal that night, it actually is a pretty fair amount as it stands. I think the concern, again, is sort of going back to that, meals purchased, meals uneaten. Everybody on this council has a BlackBerry that we're spending money on. If we could actually use them, and have staff message earlier in the day, and essentially RSVP for a meal that night, who's in for dinner tonight, who's not, they could take that day's allocation and secure meals using those dollars for that day. You could probably do that more effectively than adding another thousand bucks to the mix, which only adds an average of two dollars per person per Monday. So I would say, let's try and be smarter about how we spend the money we have, before we authorize more money to be spent on this. I just, I don't want to see us spend more money and have food sit there and go unused, if, if at all possible. And I don't want to create unnecessary overhead for staff, but staff's making time to call and order meals on Monday anyway. Could we, you know, do, do folks think they could handle an RSVP back?
Well, it depends on what we're going to RSVP for, if it's what we had tonight.
I think we need to, I think, step one is, you know, do we think there's a different system that we can undertake? Step two is, do we think there are things that you don't want on the menu anymore? Right? If you don't want the sandwiches in a package, then let's say that. If we don't want the pizza anymore, then let's say that, and give guidance, rather than just say, food's showing up that we don't want to eat, and let that keep happening. I guess that's my point.
Well, I have brought this up to Mr. Flannigan, and he said the same thing that I shared, think, you know, places to buy this are limited with this amount to spend. So, not to debate you, but...
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying.
Thank you, sir.
Do you, Ms. Teeter, would you like me to go down the line and go on your particular item to raise it, and see how that vote comes out? Then we can go to Mr. McElDowney's idea after that?
Okay.
Would you like, is that okay? Does that
Yeah.
work with you?
Mm-hmm.
Are you on here?
No.
I can't, you know, I look like a mind reader, but I'm not. Ms. Snyder?
So, Mr. McElDowney, would you propose that we take a look at what's available with what we have now, and see if there's some possibilities for doing better? Because if we could do... we could do better with what we have, then that would be okay. But, you know, we need to see what we can...
Yep. I think so. I think we need to have some facts in hand and figure out a plan.
Because I don't...
I think everybody's in agreement that the plan at present isn't working.
The plan present isn't working, I agree.
We're in agreement on that.
We have to find a way to fix it one way or the other, I do agree.
So, would it be fair to, I mean, not to shortcut the discussion and facilitate it, Mr. Mayor, but I guess my thoughts are, can we ask staff to come up with a list of vendors that are reasonable for staff to secure meals from with same-day order? Provide that list to council. Council can say, yes or no, I want it on the list for consideration every Monday. And here's a sampling of what their menu is.
I would be amenable to that. I'd like to see what they could come up with for us.
And then once that's in hand, we can figure out, do we have enough? Do we project that we would have enough if, on average, seven or so people are going to buy a meal?
Okay.
And then I guess the other piece would be, the piece we started to talk about, would it make sense to RSVP? Because like tonight, if you knew that there was going to be a sandwich you didn't want, could you say, don't buy for me? And those monies are held back. So, four sandwiches are bought instead of nine sandwiches.
That makes sense. Okay, thanks.
First thing we're going to do is just to add the $1,000 at Ms. Teeter's request. Mr. Bullock?
Add it.
Mr. McElhany?
No.
I better keep track.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
No.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms...Ms. Carson?
Boy, I want to scream.
Not a choice, and you could be the breaker right here.
I'm going to say no.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I'd like to try to take a look at Jason's proposals.
First?
First.
Okay. We'll be split at that point. And I'm certainly not going to be the one. You know, I'm going to vote yes for that. And then, I don't think there's going to be any discussion at all, reference Mr. McElhany's. I think that's one. Does anyone have a challenge with us looking at that anyway?
Uh-uh.
Let's, and can we look at Mr. McElhany's? My fear, Mr. McElhany, is that as we raise the price, it's going to become more attractive. When you look at, when you look at a Big Mac, you might say no, but if five people don't, then the next time it might be a spaghetti dinner and you might say yes.
Couple procedural things, if we may?
Yes.
First off, we don't have a motion and a second.
Oh, okay.
Secondly, we don't, still don't have a vote from Ms. Snyder. She didn't say yes or no. She just said that she wanted to hear from Jason.
Oh, that's right.
So I don't have a yes vote and we don't have a no vote.
That would be no vote.
A no. Okay. So it winds up being five, four. I need a motion first. I imagine that's from Ms. Teeter.
Move to approve the budget for a $1,000 increase for meals.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, do you want to second it?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I need to do a vote again, or can I just take the five-four?
I'll go first.
Okay. All those in favor, and I might need a hand signal.
We could do a roll call. I think we're set up if that would help.
Can you do that? Sure. Let's do that.
So, go to...
Okay. Could. It could. The only reason that I say that it could is because I know what they spend at Parks and Rec Building for their...
You're set.
Okay, roll call vote please on this particular item.
Okay, so we got a vote. Vote results and display vote binding.
Still showing five-four, so the motion will pass. Do we need a motion just to look at Mr. McElhany's plan?
Under the rule of courtship.
I don't think you need the motion because you're directing staff to take a look at it, and that's a directive to staff.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Other administrative business?
Go ahead and hit.
Seeing none, I have one. If council would be receptive, we've had a call from the roller dolls, and a number of those ladies live in the city. They are interested in bringing a bout to Commerce City. They would need to have some group between the school district, because they'll need a place to do it unless they're going to skate out here in our lobby, and the city. And my request would be if someone from staff could work as a liaison between the city and the school district and the roller dolls, to see if that's even practical. I don't know that the schools would allow them into one of their schools or not. But the request came to the city when actually, it probably should have gone to the school district, but if somebody could, and we're not doing, I have no information. I just had a request from the roller dolls saying, would you guys like to do it? We do it for a nonprofit, you know, whatever it would be, whatever they brought in. But it would be something here and we could just look into it. The answer can be no if the school district says, you know, we can't get in the schools or whatever. Is that okay? Does anyone on council have a problem with that, Mr. McElhany?
No.
Oh, okay. Anybody have a challenge with that?
Uh-uh.
I'm sorry? 14.
Are you talking about a gym location?
Yes. So I would probably open it to both schools. Yes, a gym location, because it's a flat place rather than a slope. Banks, banks the word.
What about, are you going to try Prairie also?
Yes, that's right. 27 and 14, yes. Just to see. But they're more than willing to come in. And again, there's no, nothing here. I just had the request and I'm bringing it forward. Mr. McElhany?
Thank you. We've had a request from a local paper that supports both the Commerce City and Brighton community to have a proclamation about Sunshine Week, essentially in recognition of the Colorado Sunshine Law. And I won't read all the points of this, but I would ask for council support in this measure and just relate this to our retreat and some of the key points that we spoke to during our retreat. And in specific terms, our intentions to create a communications program that builds pride, connectivity, and engagement among Commerce City residents, businesses, and employees, and our goal to establish coordinated and consistent flows of information about Commerce City through internal and external channels. I think those are two key pieces, along with several of the other points that we discussed or listed in our priorities. And if council would be in support of that, then I'd ask that we add this to the agenda for our meeting next week.
Okay. I'm going to say something anyway. Open meeting law, sunshine law, we're doing all of those things. I'm all for this proclamation. I mean, I understand and I'm behind everything that's in it. But sometimes, my blood pressure raises by the way it's presented, because the presentation came across as if, you guys aren't doing it, you better sign this because we're after you. My impression, and my impression only, you know what, there's nothing here that's not working the way it's supposed to work. And I'm getting more and more dissatisfied with certain press that operates out of Brighton. And it's not that I don't want to support it, and I support it in basis. I just don't support the way it was presented. Mr. Marino?
You know, I understand those concerns. I just think that regardless of how we feel about any individual publication, this is something that the citizens have said that is important to them, that they be able to access information at any time. We are servants of them, servants of the people, and as such, everything should be open and transparent. So I see no problem with this resolution.
Mr. Bullock?
I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. We have no problem with our transparency. And not that it is, or not that it is meant to be, but I kind of take it as an insult that we are signing a proclamation of what we already do. If we aren't living up to the sunshine law, I would like somebody to bring it forth and say that we aren't doing our best effort to make ourselves totally transparent. But this proclamation, where did it come from? And who has Sunshine Week? When did this come about? And what other jurisdictions and papers are in on this? I would like to get more information before we do a proclamation for one newspaper or something saying that we are going with their Sunshine Week. I'd like to see Sunshine Week, where it's originated, how many other papers. I haven't seen it in the Denver Post. I haven't seen anything else about it. I would like to get some more information because I don't think we should be signing onto a proclamation that just comes up out of the clear blue sky unless we have something to hide. And we are totally transparent and we are on TV. And I believe that the people were asking for it, they'd be asking for it. But I haven't seen this proclamation in any other publication or any of the other newspapers that come to us, or the ones I read in Thornton. I was up in Broomfield this weekend and I've seen their papers. And so I would like to see more information before we sign onto a proclamation like this.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Benson?
Well, I agree with Mr. Bullock. I'd like to find out what the origin is of this request that we sign a proclamation. It sounds like it's a proclamation where we're saying again, as we did in the oath of office that we took, that we're going to abide by state law. We've already all said that.
If I can just jump in, Mr. Mayor? Sure, Mr. McElhany, you were next. I mean, before we all, you know, give our same comment on that vein, this is not a unique request by the publication in question. This is a national effort called Sunshine Week, Your Right to Know. It is a national initiative to promote dialogue about the importance of open government and freedom of information. Participants include news media, civic groups, libraries, nonprofits, schools, and others interested in the public's right to know. I am not aware of other groups or municipalities in the state that have signed the proclamation. I will add to the comments that it would have been nice had this come forward with that sort of preamble. But that said, I'll step back and let others continue their comments with that information.
You know, there are probably jurisdictions, maybe a whole state or cities, that don't have a sunshine law like we do. I think it would be very useful in a situation like that where you get your local officials, maybe your state legislature, to say that this is what we're going to do. But we do have a state law that was passed by the people, it was initiated by the people in 1972, as I recall. Do you think that's what it is, Mr. McElhany, that there are places that don't have this already in their law?
That's true. And I will qualify this by saying I had about seven minutes of piecemeal time to look at the website. But it looks to be a very broad, sweeping effort to try and boost public access to information. And I think all of us have heard the stories of folks who try and get information from, whether it's a local municipality, or a state, or the Fed, and find themselves thwarted in trying to do so. It looks like we've got, you know, again, I would encourage folks to look at sunshineweek.org, read some of those materials, and if we want to. I mean, and I will also say that we are behind the eight ball on this. The week of celebration is actually last week, so.
Do you think it adds anything that we don't have already in our sunshine law? Does it go beyond what our state...
The fact that we have a sunshine law puts us well ahead, obviously. I think this is an acknowledgement or recognition of the fact that we are supportive of that law. So, I'm not advocating beyond the position that I've taken thus far. How's that?
Okay. Okay, Mr. Benson?
I guess we can say that we support all state law.
Yeah. I'm with you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I think this is interesting. We're mandated by the state law to be open and transparent. And I think we're also mandated by our conscience and our policies. And I think we do pretty well. I don't see us needing a proclamation because we got Mr. Benson, and he's always bringing up the point about the sunshine law. So, you know, I think this is a great effort on some folks who maybe in a situation where that's not available to them. But I, you know, we pass many of these weird proclamations. I think we just need to state of business and, yeah, just continue to be more and more, hi folks, more and more transparent, you know?
Okay. Mr. McElhany, do you get a feel for what the council's decision is?
I have a very clear, well, I think we have another comment from down the other way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
I have no problem supporting that. I think with some of the recent things that have gone on in the nation in the last month or so, citizens are looking for, to be reaffirmed that they have a government out here that is actually working the way they want that government to work. We're already practicing under the sunshine law, so I see no harm. I understood Mr. Bullock's argument, the mayor's argument, Tony's. I understand all of that. But it's already here. And if it's really something that is a national thing and we're trying to lead the way to make other cities, other governments sign on to this, then I agree with Mr. Marino. And I don't know, I'm assuming Mr. McElhany brought this forward and is in agreement with it. But I have no problem. I understood everybody's argument. But I do understand citizens asking for certain requests at certain times when...
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Flannery and then Mr. Marino?
Oh.
No, you're fine, sir. You're fine. I have a feeling you're going to tell us something and then we can go from there.
I would just say that I think every one of you have brought up excellent points about this process. It came to our attention during the week of last week. So I think Councilmember Carson is correct as well. It's a reaffirmation of what the law states. And I guess I would compare it to couples that redo their vows for marriage at 20 years. In some ways, I think what we're saying is, is that we abide by, we know we abide by it, and we would follow that in any event. And I think that's the main purpose here. But I do agree that you've all brought up good points about the way it's been brought up and the timing of how it's been brought up. We didn't have a lot of time as we were all in Washington DC last week, so it being brought up tonight is, I think, in the proper timing.
Mr. Marino?
I mean, I think, I agree with the way Mr. Flannery put it. You know, it's just a reaffirmation of what we already do. This council has made a commitment to open and transparent government. I don't think there's anything wrong with a proclamation or a resolution saying that we still abide by that commitment. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a proposed resolution for National Lemonade Day. I mean, and that's, you know, probably important for those groups that propose it. This is important for this group too. And this is a very fundamental aspect of our democracy and our government, is making sure that people have open and available access to public records. So, again, I have no problems supporting this. You know, I don't think the point that we already do it, so we don't need to pass this, holds a lot of weight with me because it's just simply stating that we are committed to doing what we already do.
Yeah. Maybe as a way to get around this for this present time because I think it's going to become somewhat heated. Mr. Flannery, if it would be okay with council, if you could do a small survey of what's going on in the metro area and come back to us next week, we won't make a decision at all, one way or the other, now. And again, as I stated in the past, it was not with what was placed on this particular proclamation. I agree with what's on there. It was how it was presented to us. I am, I know my short time is showing, but I'm getting less and less patient with certain sections. So, Mr. Benson?
I'll listen.
You sure? Are you sure? I want to give you a chance, and we'll bring it back next week. Okay. Any other administrative business? Seeing none, we're going to go to reports. And guess what? Mr. Flannery, I'm going to go to you first.
That's great because I definitely want to thank all of you for... That's great because I definitely wanna thank all of you for last week. I really felt our group worked together as a team when days—some couldn't make it to the congressional meetings on Capitol Hill, others covered AMP very well. And I think we had a lot of good discussions, so I personally wanna thank all of you for that great teamwork. Secondly, I wanted to mention that tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. in these council chambers is a Congressman Perlmutter Healthcare Summit, and it will be at 9:00 a.m. in the Civic Center, maybe not in the chambers.
I can't be either.
And secondly, wanted to reiterate a couple of things that happened last week while we were in Washington, D.C. Our own Brittany Morris was elected chairperson of the Metro Denver Economic Development Council's Professionals Group. That is not a small feat, and it is an actual election. And it puts us at the chair spot of the Metro Denver region, so it's very important. Wanted to mention also Mr. Brian McBroom, now deputy city manager. So, first meeting. Brian has done an excellent job, and I couldn't be happier.
And we don't have to learn how to spell anyone else's name.
You don't have to find out how to pronounce his name.
You need to get him a new name tag, though.
Lastly, I wanted to mention that Governor Heckenlooper—sorry to say that still—is holding a bottom-up economic development meeting, and it will be held in Arvada next Monday from 2:00 to 4:00. And there will be a breakout session with the Adams County group. So, you'll have a chance as Adams County cities and representatives to have a discussion about economic development and how we wanna approach it as a region. So, this is a great opportunity. Again, it's at the Arvada Center, 2:00 to 4:00 next Monday. And will the governor be there, Brittany?
He will.
And it's open to residents, and the governor will be there as well. So, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Gaylor?
On occasion, members of the city council have said to me, "Bob, I know that your office is very busy, but I don't know what all you do in the city attorney's office." And that was mentioned in the evaluation, too. So, I discussed it with my staff, and I think that a good approach, at least on the trial basis, is, say, every couple of weeks, I'm gonna send you to the whole council a report, just giving you a general overview of what's going on in the city attorney's office, and I think you'll find that helpful. And that way, you can stay on top of things a little better of what's transpiring in the city attorney's office, rather than just seeing end results and not knowing as things go on and progress what's happening. So, we're gonna try that, and I'm open to any comments or questions as we proceed through the process, see how you think it's working.
Wonderful idea, sir. Mr. McElhany, did you have a comment on that? Okay.
I don't have anything else to mention.
Okay. We'll go into reports. Ms. Snyder? Now, is yours admin or reports? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Wow, I'm not used to going first on reports. It's been a busy, a busy time, definitely. I thought that things went very well in Washington, and I'd like to thank the citizens for the opportunity to go and represent us on the Hill and at NLC. And I thought all of the meetings went very well, and we worked together very well as a team. And as far as my, you know, my personal things, I was a very—had a very busy week. What I thought in the beginning might be, you know, being that this would've been my last one, I thought I would've slowed down a bit, but that was not the case at all. If anything, I caught a little more speed. So, anyway, I was proud to be appointed the state chair for the DMO, and I was asked by Comcast in Washington to do an interview directly after that. And we're actually gonna get that interview done here in Denver because I actually did not have the time to do it when we were in D.C., but I was honored that they asked. And I had a chance to do a full day over at Microsoft in D.C., and it was amazing coursework over there. Councilman Benson was in there as well, and there were several people from Thornton, as well as many other cities around the country that were at this particular training, and it was really an amazing. Computer work is not my forte. I know just enough to be able to get by, but it was really intense, and there were several breakout sessions depending on what your particular interests were. And I really, really learned a lot at this one, so I was very impressed with what was available to learn from, and I really thought that was a great session. Met with the ladies from Women in Municipal Government. They're still moving right along and doing a lot of great things. And then, of course, Public Safety Crime Prevention, met with them, and we came up with what our goals are gonna be for the spring session, which spring is actually gonna be more like June because we couldn't find dates that worked for all of us. But we're going to—we figured out what we're gonna focus on. We tried to narrow it down, even though there's just a ton of stuff to focus on, so that we can get it all in in the four days that we get together. But we're going to focus on infrastructure, cybersecurity, and human trafficking. And human trafficking will include missing and murdered women and children. We feel pretty strongly that human trafficking has become really a serious issue that we need to take a hard look at. And I will be presenting to council in very near future a resolution in support of the Trafficking Victims Protection Reauthorization Act. So, we're gonna be concentrating on that. And I had an extra day at the Capitol, which was a unique opportunity for me, which I really appreciated, where I had an opportunity to spend the day. Part of it, I sat and observed the Senate, and part of it, I sat and observed the House. And I was fortunate that representatives from Colorado were on the floor for both, on both sides, and it really gave me an opportunity to see things at the federal level at work. So, it was a great opportunity, and I really appreciated having that. Lastly, I attended the town hall meeting with Mary Hodge, and I thought it went very well. It pretty well filled the room, and so I thought that the meeting went very well. And, you know, it's a difficult time right now at the state Capitol because of the budget and what they're having to look at. And she brought a pie chart and kinda tried to define what the different areas were that we're gonna be looking at. And I think we all know there's gonna be some cuts, some serious cuts. And of particular concern for everyone in the room, including myself, was cuts to education. I'm quite concerned about what's going to happen to our education program, and so we're gonna be keeping a close eye on what's gonna happen there. So, that's more than enough. Thank you for your patience.
Mr. McElhany, do you wanna go next?
Thank you. Just really quickly, I wanted to ask the council to put May 20th on their calendars. Can you hear me? The Commerce City Cultural Diversity Summit, the first ever, will be occurring on that date. We mentioned this at the retreat. This is being sponsored by the Commerce City One Community Organization, and Mr. Marino and I are both—have both been asked to help organize this event. Rather excited about it. Again, it will occur May 20th, and the intent is to coordinate with the opening of the visitor's center, so it will be a full day. So, hopefully, you have the afternoon open. But this will involve leadership from across our community to talk about—I'll just read you the little slogan from the event. "It is intended to be an exchange between community leaders to discuss the values, programs, and activities that have succeeded in overcoming diversity barriers, and to harvest ideas that will help address the factors that divide, segregate, and impact the success and growth of our community." So, quite excited about the potential and the discussions to come of that.
Great.
Hopefully, we can get that added to the council calendar as well.
Yes.
You should all have received your invites.
And I've heard great things about the group and the two of you, so thank you for representing our city. Mr. Benson, I'm just gonna skip all around today.
Thank you. Well, also, I wanna thank all the citizens for sending us to—there were six of us that went to the NLC in D.C. this year. Also, right before D.C., I went to the opening of the Reunion Orthodontics Clinic in Reunion. I think the mayor, Councilwoman Snyder, was there also. Just another new business in the Reunion area, more people being employed out there. It's just good to see that happening all the time. While we were at NLC, of course, there were the various workshops that we go to on Saturday and Sunday, like last Saturday and Sunday. We also met with five people out of the nine of our congressional delegation. We met with—personally with Cory Gardner, who's the Congressional District Four congressman. We met with our own congressman, Ed Perlmutter. We met personally with Diana Deget, who represents Congressional District One, which is Denver. We met with the staffs of Senator Mike Bennett and Senator Mark Udall. Everybody was in kind of a hurry, I think, because the money ran out, I think, last Tuesday, and so they had to get something else passed, and I think they did, which tides the federal government over until, what, April the 8th? Anybody? Was it April the 8th? Yeah, so come April the 8th, there's gonna have to be another interim-type bill passed to keep the federal government in business, if that's what they wanna do. There was a lot of talk about—you know, we're asking for our number-one priority is to get the off-ramp from southbound Tower onto westbound Peña. About a million and a half dollars to do the engineering and the design of that off-ramp. E-470 is obligated to build it, but we have to get it designed and engineered before anybody can build it. So, hopefully, we're gonna be getting that money maybe this year. Everybody's talking about earmarks. We're not doing any earmarks this year. We're not doing any earmarks anymore. Well, what is an earmark? I think what people are talking about is when somebody's pet project gets tagged on to a defense bill or something, right at the last minute, and nobody knows what it was about. I think that what's gonna happen is this whole process for local grants and federal funding is gonna be more transparent, so that you can see exactly what that money is going for. Because without earmarks, without the CDBG grants, local governments are gonna be hurting very badly, I think. So, I don't know how they're thinking that—and this is in the House, of course. They're thinking, you know, the Republicans are in the majority in the House right now. And from what we heard, we met with, I guess, four Democrats and one Republican. From what we heard, if the Republicans wake up within the next year, we might get earmarks again, but they're not gonna be abused like they have been in the past. And I think what started the whole problem was somebody got a bridge built to the other side of a river, and it stopped right there. You know, the bridge to nowhere that you've all heard about. Well, that's the sort of thing that needs to be stopped, and I'm hoping that the various committees in the House and the Senate are going to be able to review these things, that there's gonna be a lot of transparency. But yet, we're still gonna see money allocated for local projects, which has to happen, or local governments are gonna be hurt very badly. But again, I think we all got a lot out of meeting with our congressional representatives. I think that everybody that we talked to agreed with our need for this off-ramp, even Cory Gardner, who represents Congressional District Four. I don't think he said, "Well, I'm gonna support that," but I don't think he's gonna oppose it either because he's pointing out that some of the people from his area use Tower Road as a shortcut to get down into Denver, so they would be using that to get on to Peña Boulevard. And let's just hope that after our time in Washington this year, that maybe we get that million and a half dollars so I can start lighting a fire under E-470. So, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Teeter?
I just have a couple of things. I too wanna thank the citizens for having me, allowing me to attend the National League of Cities. I was awarded my Silver Award from the NLC Training Institute, and it was given to me by Mr. Bullock. And secondly, Mr. Clements, there was a compliment that a massage therapist at DIA gave to me. She lives in Thornton, she works at DIA, and she says in the wintertime she cannot wait to get to the Commerce City boundary because the snows are plowed. I mean, the streets are all plowed and everything. And Brittany, the other part, segment of this report that's too emotional for me, I will share with the audience at another time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Marino?
Don't have much to report, other than, you know, attended the National League of Cities. I thought our city in particular had very productive conversations with our delegation from Colorado. It was a busier conference than in the past, given my new role on the Human Development Steering Committee for the National League of Cities. That's a committee that is charged with developing the policies that National League of Cities will then lobby for based on communities around the country. And I'm particularly honored to serve on this committee because they deal with the issues that I'm most passionate about, and those are social issues, senior issues, veterans' issues, youth issues, healthcare, education. So, I'm really—I'm proud to serve on that committee. That committee decided that the two areas that we will focus on most for the coming year are gonna be in the areas of social determinants of health, which is kind of a broad, encompassing strategy or encompassing topic, to talk about the impacts on health in our communities and, you know, based on socioeconomic, cultural diversity. We're gonna explore all of those issues at our next two meetings. And they were particularly impressed that Commerce City also, you know, they're handing around applications to sign up for the Let's Move communities. And I was like—I said, "Well, we already are a Let's Move community," and they were impressed because not many cities in that committee, represented in that committee, had signed up for that yet, and Commerce City was one of the first ones, so it was really nice to see that. The other issue that we will focus on is some of the entitlement reforms, so Social Security, Medicare. We're gonna take a look at those issues and see—because those are issues that do affect local communities as well, and we're gonna see if we can develop some good policy on behalf of the National League of Cities to then lobby for our—with our federal representatives. But that's pretty much all I have to report. It was a very nice trip. It always feels like going back home when I go to Washington, D.C., so I spent so much time there, so that was nice. And thank you to the citizens for your recognizing the importance that we continue that dialogue with our federal representatives and making sure that we bring home some projects for Commerce City.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Well, I'd also like to thank the citizens of Commerce City for sending me to Washington. It was a very productive trip. I wanna thank staff because they did a bang-up job. They kept us moving all the time, and it was tiring. This was very tiring because we all had different things that we were doing during this trip. As Ms. Teeter stowed my thunder about me handing out the Silver Awards to her and 28 others, so I won't go over it again. But we had a great trip out there, and we had really productive meetings with our congressional delegation, and I think some really great things are gonna happen in Commerce City this year. And Guillermo, be patient, it's coming.
Ms. Carson?
First of all, congratulations, Brian. Congratulations, Brittany. Congratulations, Tracy. So, it's nice to sit here in your presence. And then, it is National Women's Month this month, so to all the girls out there, at least they've got a long ways to go. And then, I would like to also thank the people of Commerce City for the privilege of going to D.C. It was very productive. I started mine a little tired because I decided that I would do mass transit the whole way. So, I flew into Baltimore, took the free bus from the airport to the train station, and it was just tiring trying to get my luggage into that train station. It is not set up for luggage, I guess, so I bought my $6 ticket and got on the train and arrived at Union Station and then got on the metro and got off the metro and then wheeled my 50-pound suitcase 10 minutes to the hotel. I will learn to pack lighter. And it was fun. It really was. It was very interesting to see this and to know that you can go anywhere you want without a car, and you just, like I said, need to pack a little bit. without a car, and you just, like I said, need to pack a little bit lighter. The one thing that I did hear at one of the -- it was the second morning of the session, and it was the one with the First Lady at, and I was very proud that this city has already taken a very proactive stance at being active. But the other thing, one of the speakers was there. It was the gentleman, and I'm going to have to tell you, his name was Sean Donovan, Secretary of Department of Housing. What a speaker. He was fabulous. And the one thing I walked away from there was the message that I heard was that we all have to start learning to be better at working together. We have to work together with every entity in our city. We have to learn to work together, cities with cities, and that's the way that we, as Americans, will be able to be productive again. So, all I can say is thank you. It was very enjoyable, and thank you to everybody that helped out, as far as even Dominic running me up the hill.[1299.21][1299.21](Laughter). That's the other thing. I will learn to run around with older people, people who know you need more time to get to meetings.[1307.02][1307.02](Laughter). But thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
I just wanted to welcome Chief Baca back. He just completed a pilgrimage to Israel, and he's still alive. It's great to -- I hope he had -- learned a lot and had a great time. It's good to see you.
Good. Thank you. And I want to thank council for allowing me to stay behind, and when you hear what I've accomplished in this week, you'll understand why I did not go with you all. I really appreciate all the good work that you did there. This past week, I'm sitting on a blue ribbon board for homeless here in Adams County. Had two meetings on China. We are several steps closer to bringing Chinese politicos, as well as businesspeople, to Denver. We're hoping to do a fairly large event that will be newsworthy, probably at a downtown Denver hotel. At this present time, the mayors from Glendale and Erie will be heading up this project for Metro Mayor's with my influence and backing. I have not dropped completely out of this. My wife and I spent a full day working Habitat down on 69th. We're putting up, I think there's nine homes in Commerce City, and when they come back next year, I'm going to be out there at the other end of that thing saying, "Hey, guys, we need to get out there and volunteer for this." Gave a tour of the city to a health agency that is thinking of coming to our city, which was pretty enlightening. Met with Pastor Marlin, who I think most of you know. They do a summer program, and they bring kids from 14 into their program, and they almost guarantee, because they say everyone that goes in there and gets accepted with their scholarship will be ahead one year by the time the summer's over. Phenomenal program, really good. Had an invite to go down and listen at The Cell, which is an anti-terrorist group, and he made a couple of really good comments that I'm not going to repeat here. But also was at ACED for their executive board. I had a regional air quality meeting that are getting harder and harder for me. I'm just not on that same wavelength. They're, to me, their structure is becoming way too tight, and the way I explained it last time is we're going to have the cleanest air in the whole United States with no business or jobs. Went to the ribbon cutting for the county building. Also, went to lunch for the DIA update, which is phenomenal. All of DIA's numbers are up. If that's not a sign that things are getting better, I don't know what is, because if people are buying plane tickets and coming through our airport, that means there's some money out there. Metro Mayor's Executive Board, we did get approval for the International Committee out of Metro Mayor's to continue our China and also to include other countries. Now that we're working with Germany, we're working with Mexico, we're working with Canada. This is going to turn into just a phenomenal thing. Got to talk to a group of students, students, college students from Boston, who -- about Habitat for Humanities. They had come out here to volunteer, and so I got a chance to talk to them. I also spoke to a leadership, a leadership class that comes out of North Metro Chamber down at the Capitol, which was real interesting, because it was Eric Hansen and myself. And what we did is we played off each other, county government compared to city government, how they were different. They had already talked to all the state people, so they understood state budgets. But then explaining how county budgets and city budgets are the same and different was real, was real interesting. Had the Adams County Council of Governments breakfast also, and also was at the Hunger Free Colorado meeting here, and then the Home Builders Forum for 27J, which was good. The home builders would kick in a certain amount of money per lots that they would put in, and that would go into a fund that would help support some of the extra things for 27J. Well, needless to say, we sell more homes in Commerce City than they do in any other city in 27J, and we only had 300. They're used to bringing in 2,000, so money's down. So, we're working on, what else can we do? How can we direct this group? And went to both of Mary Hodge's town meetings, and it was very interesting, because the difference between Brighton and ours was nothing. We had more people, but it's taxes and education. Those were the two biggest things that everybody's worried about. The interesting part was, when I went to Brighton, they're very much on, "No, no, no. No more tax, no more tax, no more tax." We actually had people here who were saying, "You know what? We have to do something, and if it's going to mean tax, you need to tell us how much it is and what it's going to get us." So, I was really proud of our people here, because, you know, they at least saw that there was another way out. Mayor Protam and I attended the Shenyang Performing Arts on Saturday night as an invitation from that group. They are a -- there's actually four groups that go through the United States and the world doing Chinese performances, and both of us had a chance to be interviewed for Chinese papers. And also, we spoke at the event, which was pretty exciting, because here's one more place that Commerce City is being recognized. Now, you understand why I was glad that you all did such a great job in Washington.
So, what did you do while you were gone?
I know. My wife never even saw me. I also want to thank Ms. Snyder, Mayor Protam Snyder, because she's going to fill in for me on Wednesday. Wednesday is the mayor's day to do Meals on Wheels, and I was all set to go, but my wife will be going in the hospital on Wednesday, so she's going to take my place to do that. And so, I'll be pretty incapacitated that particular day. Mr. Flannery, do you have anything else? If there be no further business, I'm sorry I took so much time, but I didn't want anybody to think I was just sitting around here drinking.
Oh, there's one more thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Bullock.
Visitor Center for the Arsenals is going to be the 25th, the opening, the grand opening, the 25th of May.
Good, so that will not be.
And there's been a lot of dates being -- but this is the one they think all the congressional delegation can get here for.
So, that will help you, Mr. Macaldoney and Mr. Moreno, because that'll change the date for yours, right? You'll be by yourself rather than doubled up.
Yeah.
Okay. I did get two thank-you notes from Mary Hodge for the cards and flowers, and also from the Carols family. And I also have tickets here. Hopefully, everybody here will take some before they leave, and it's for the Commerce City Youth Orchestra, and they're free tickets for March 15th at 7:00.
March 15th?
Uh-oh. Well, you know what? This is not going to do us any good at all, is it? We just got these today. Never mind. Disregard, if there be no further business coming before this board, we're done. Drive.
I love the time change. It's not like.